Of site visits, unique site visitors to the website when compared to 2019 figures, which is obviously the last pre-pandemic figures and therefore the best baseline that we've got. As a small indicator of our success in that area as well, we entered the top ten of sources for ticket sales for the Crescent as well, which is a fantastic achievement. And I know speaking to them, they're very pleased about as well that we're supporting business and we can see direct impact there. We were also fortunate to be able to secure £15,000 worth of funding from the City Council's Cafe Culture Fund, and that's enabled us to invest in the website, getting new modules in there, updating the look and feel and the navigation of the website. We now have the ability to put a promotional video in the header, which I think will really help once we're able to get that up and running. We have social media integration, which I think is a fairly fundamental element of tourism website these days, particularly getting Instagram in there. And we've also got a module that we put in, which means that events organisers in and around the city will be able to go in, manage their own accounts and upload information about their own upcoming events, which helps them, but it also helps us with regards to the kind of backend management as well. And really getting, being able to manage this and take, as I say, this more coordinated approach to the promotion of the city also gives Opportunity Peterborough the opportunity to create a destination management organisation model, which is used in other locations around the country. So if you look at many of the tourism offers, Visit York, Visit Pembrokeshire, you know, and the ones associated with large cities as well, they are backed by fee-paying membership networks. So being able to, being responsible for Visit Peterborough means that we're able to create such a network. We're in discussions with many partners at the moment about getting that off the ground, very advanced stages, we're looking to have that kick in in the new financial year. And that's going very well, and that will hopefully generate some revenue that will enable us to increase the activity in this area as well and better promote Peterborough as a location for visitors in the future. But it's not just for visitors outside of the city, it's also to engage, and in fact primarily to engage with the communities in and around the city and help raise the profile of what we have here to offer, which, you know, the fantastic range of services and attractions that the people can take advantage of, particularly as we start to emerge from the restrictions that have recently been lifted. With regards to inward investment, we've had 21 inquiries that we have dealt with this year, so a slight increase from when this report was put together. In fact, we've had five businesses that we've helped to land in the city, creating a total of 334 jobs. And this equates to an increase in economic activity in the area of around £10 million. Just looking at the increase in salary levels that will come into the area. So notwithstanding any capital investment that will go into the development of these facilities or the business rates that will be collected, and that's purely looking at the jobs increase. So very pleased with those figures and they're ahead of our targets for this year. Business support has been an area of focus for us, as you'd expect, particularly the start-up arena. We've had some fantastic reports coming out over the year, most recently Centre for Cities ranking Peterborough fifth in the country as far as start-up rates per capita. We also, there was another report out recently showing that Peterborough had far more start-ups than any other local authority in the Cambridgeshire and Peterborough area, at around two and a half thousand. So that was fantastic. And we want to do everything that we can to make sure we're giving those entrepreneurs the best start they can. So we established the Start Up Peterborough Programme with a number of other partners and sponsors who were listed within the report, and we managed to support 40 businesses and two cohorts during this year. I'm also pleased to say that we were able to support the Business and IP Centre's Jump Start Programme. So the Business and IP Centre is an association with the British Library, provides resources to start up in early-stage businesses through the Cambridgeshire and Peterborough Library networks. They had 38 applicants for a prize of £5,000. We reviewed those business plans and then helped to mentor some of those businesses who were on the shortlist. And in fact, the pitch competition for that is taking place in Cambridge Library today at the moment. So very interested to see how that turns out and all best wishes to participants in that. We also established a peer group for the occupiers at Old Walton Hill, Peterborough Gateway Site, bringing some of those larger companies together to discuss some of the issues and challenges that they have, primarily with regards to skills and workforce. So very pleased to be able to help get that off the ground. The Smart Manufacturing Alliance, which is a joint venture between Opportunity Peterborough and the Cambridgeshire and Peterborough Combined Authority, was officially launched in October this year. Again, slight increase on the numbers that we have in this report, but we have 22 members signed up for that now, with another 20 very warm leads in the pipeline. The Smart Manufacturing Alliance has been established to support manufacturing companies across Cambridgeshire and Peterborough. It is its own legal entity, but primarily delivered by Opportunity Peterborough staff. And really, manufacturing is one of the four key sectors identified across Cambridgeshire and Peterborough and was the only one without its dedicated networking organisation. We saw an opportunity to step into that gap and really support a sector that's vital to the economy of Peterborough and continues to grow and provide really good quality employment. We also have the ACME 4.0 programme, which is a European-funded programme through the ERDF Fund, stands for Advanced Capabilities in Manufacturing Industry 4.0, related to the specific funding stream that it comes from there. And really, it provides 12 hours of support to manufacturing SMEs as well as grant funding to them to help invest in industry 4.0 technologies such as 3D printing, additive manufacturing, robotics, automation of processes as well as, you know, physically AI and a whole range, virtual reality, augmented reality, that can all help these businesses to improve their competitiveness and productivity in the future. We've had two grant applications for that approved so far, with a number more in the pipeline, so that's going very well as well. On the Towns Fund, we're supporting through the development of a feasibility study for Enterprise and Skills Centre, informally known as Digital Incubator. Again, progressing well, timelines for the deadline on that will slip slightly just because of some changes internally in staffing resources, but we've got solutions in place and that's discussed with the programme officers, that is not a problem. And we're engaging with a number of really important stakeholders in that, including the Anglia Ruskin University, who may well be a key partner in the delivery of that going forward. With regards to strategy, we're supporting on the Combined Authority's Economic and Skills Strategy at the moment and also with the East Anglian Productivity Forum, which is part of a national initiative to look at ways in which we can address the productivity problem that we've witnessed across the country for many years now. Some really interesting and exciting work coming out of that, particularly with regards to health and social care. So it will be interesting to see if we can get some pilots off the ground in the coming year to help with health and social care improvements in the area and integrating them with some of the exciting work that's being done, obviously, within the life sciences within the region. So that's really a roundup of the year as it's been. The next section of the report looks at 2022-23 and some of the opportunities and challenges that we have there. We do have some challenges, particularly in the financial area, I think it's fair to say. You know, we're looking at reductions in our contributions from Peterborough City Council, and we need to look at ways in which we will be able to bridge that gap. We really need to, well, we have made some decisions with regards to those sorts of services that we can and can't provide in the future. Whatever we do, we've got to make sure that it's sustainable and, you know, into the future. So the Opportunity Peterborough is here to continue to support economic growth and job creation and our communities, and that's what we've set out here. Essentially, we'll be looking at generating revenue and income from membership, sponsorship and paid-for services related to some of those programmes that I've already discussed in the previous section. We will obviously be looking at grant funding as an opportunity for funding as well, but that will have to be supplementary. We can't rely on grant funding, given the kind of the short-term nature of that, it ebbs and flows two months. We need a solid income to help support the team and make sure that, you know, we're giving confidence to businesses that we're here for the long term with these services. So the first of these is the place marketing. So again, we're looking at four elements of that: inward investment, visitor economy, business tourism and talent attraction. We've established a very strong network of property developers, property agents, law firms, solicitors involved within the commercial property market. And we're looking at how we might monetise that and turn that into a fee-paying network as happens in many other places, to help support the promotion of the city as a fantastic business location, and make sure we continue that engagement with partners such as Department for International Trade, Growth Works and private sector organisations KPMG, PWC, some of those larger organisations that have been working with to draw in large-scale investment over the last few years. We also have Visit Peterborough, I've also discussed that somewhat to date. We're having very positive conversations with stakeholders such as Peterborough Positive and other partners with regards to the establishment of that as a fee-paying network. We've been doing engagement with that community for probably 18 months, two years now, and we've been upfront with them at all times that the way that we're going to make sure that we're able to provide Peterborough with the service it needs here is through a fee-paying membership. And so that's what we'll be launching later this year. SMA, the Smart Manufacturing Alliance, the focus obviously again will be on increasing membership there to make sure we've got a sustainable financial model. We've got equity funding into that organisation, which should see through the next five years, which we'll be using in decreasing increments as we build up the commercial income for that. But that equity funding has already been secured from the Combined Authority, from the Local Growth Fund. Likewise, with the ERDF programme, ACME 4.0, that ERDF funding has been secured, we are delivering the programme. That will run through to June of next year, when it'll then start to wrap up and is for a hard stop in September. And of course, we have the Bondholder Programme, the Bondholder Network as well. Had a very successful business breakfast just at the end of last week in the Peterborough Museum, in the fantastic urban gallery there. We'll be looking to increase the numbers and improve the service that we're providing to members of that network. We're looking to swell the numbers as well by making sure that anyone who joins the Smart Manufacturing Alliance or the Visit Peterborough network will become automatic members of the Bondholder Network, should they wish, so that we can really increase the numbers of people coming to those breakfasts and other events that we run, as that's a real key value for the network members. We're also very pleased to say that this year we will be looking to bring back the Bondholder Dinner at Peterbrook Cathedral, so we're just in talks with them at the moment. Really looking forward to be able to put on that event again. It's one of the highlights of the year for many of us, certainly for me. We will obviously, as I say, have to stop providing some services unfortunately, and we do so, you know, with a heavy heart, but we have to look at what is going to generate income in the future and therefore be sustainable. Much of the work that will need to stop is on the strategic side and that there to address market failure, which is one of the key reasons for economic development, is to do the job that the private sector can't do, particularly with regards to the enabling environment, as I say, and creating that, you know, supporting in the skills area, engaging with schools and inspiring that next generation of the workforce, areas where it is hard to generate income. And so also supporting the City Council with regards to some of its responses to consultation, that sort of thing. So making sure that Peterborough's voice is heard within some of those national and regional areas. Unfortunately, unless we can find funding for that on an ad hoc basis, that's an area which we'll also have to stop. But, you know, I think we are looking at a lot of opportunity for Opportunity Peterborough and for our ability to continue to support economic growth in the city. So whilst some areas will, some areas will have to stop. You know, we are, we are here really in the future to promote Peterborough as a fantastic place to do business, as a fantastic place to come and visit and to study and to live. That will be one of our key focuses and that's certainly the, one of the priorities that has been given to us by the council for our future work. We're very proud that we're going to be able to continue supporting manufacturing, which is obviously, as I say, such a key sector for our area. And obviously, continue to grow our work with the Bondholder Network, supporting all businesses across the Peterborough area. We'll obviously be looking for other opportunities either by ourselves or with partners to secure funding to deliver other services in the future and hopefully start to readdress some of the challenges that we previously have done, particularly around skills and sustainability in smart cities. But that wraps up the report and really asking the committee just to note what has been said with regards to our performance over the past year and also, you know, to garner your support for our work going forward in whatever way that's possible. Many thanks.
Thank you, Tom. That was a fluent and exacting overview of your report. Thank you. Can you do it all again from the top because Councillor Restive was a little late arriving?
No problem.
Really, notwithstanding the funding issues which you've obviously identified, OP is in an enviable position because you are promoting a dynamic and growing city where businesses want to locate. So I don't think it's all doom and gloom, and I'm sure members will have lots of questions for you regarding the report that identifies the areas you're working in. So members, I think Lynne Ayers, councillor Ayers first.
Thank you, Chair. In my title, I have got the word skills. And that means not just community skills, the adult education budget, but also adult skills. And that is something that you were dealing with, and you mention it in paragraph four, one sixteen, the skills service, which unfortunately, due to an increasingly challenging funding environment, it actually had to stop. Can you explain what that funding environment was and why it had to stop? Because that happened more recently, of course, and I want everybody to understand what happened there for you, because I think that is terrifically important for Peterborough. I'll come to that in a minute because I've got another question, Chair, as well.
Certainly. Well, in 2020, the, well, the work at the skills service was wholly funded by the Greater Cambridge, Greater Peterborough LEAP, and after then the Cambridgeshire and Peterborough Combined Authority. In 2020, the Combined Authority ran a competition for a large contract to deliver combined economic development services across the Cambridgeshire and Peterborough area, which included skills. As such, the funding for Opportunity Peterborough's work for the skills service was wrapped up into that larger contract. Opportunity Peterborough was part of a consortium that bid for that work, but unfortunately the consortium wasn't successful. As such, the funding for the skills service was no more, and the staff that who were responsible for the delivery of that service had the ability to two-pay over to the new Growth Works service. Some of them took that opportunity, but some of them decided to stay with Opportunity Peterborough, which I'm very pleased to say they were, you know, very committed to the work that they were doing and really saw an opportunity to commercialise that. Now, yes, they were doing work within kind of adult skills, but a large proportion of the work was also with regards to the engagement with secondary schools, and that was really where we saw the revenue coming from. Unfortunately, due to the ongoing restrictions of the pandemic... Unfortunately, due to the ongoing restrictions of the pandemic and an inability to access schools physically, we weren't able to generate the revenue. We needed to continue supporting that team. Also, some large funding, a large funding pot that we'd be going to, going forward, didn't come to fruition for a number of reasons. And so unfortunately, at the end of twenty twenty one, we had to make the difficult decision to make the rest of that team redundant and therefore we don't have anyone currently working on the skills service programme.
Follow up, councillor Ayers?
Yes, please, thank you. And of course, I noticed as well, and I heard you saying about the challenges for the future, and when you were talking about the area of work that you can't do in the future, you actually did confirm that this included the engaging with schools, which is another part of my portfolio being education.
Yeah.
And of course, the most important part, because they're the young people of the future, who we hope we're going to keep in Peterborough with their skills and going to the university here in order to run the businesses in Peterborough in the future. So if you can't do the work with the schools, can you tell me if anybody is lined up to do so? Because I haven't heard that there is.
Okay. Well, the Growth Works, as I say, they have a skills strand to the work that they're doing. A lot of that is focusing on working with companies to understand their skills development strategy and improve those strategies. But I believe that some of that work is also focused on engagement with schools. But my understanding is certainly not to the extent and the volume that we were previously doing through through the work of the skills service, which was delivered not just in in Peterborough, but across Fennland and Huntingdonshire as well.
Because you used to have a large careers. Fair, a fair, yes. And I went there myself for thousands of schoolchildren across the, across the county.
That's correct. I think at its height, we had around six thousand young people coming to that when we ran that at the East of England Showground. Yeah, it was very well received by the schools in the area and very well attended by a wide range of employers.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Ayers, thank you Tom. Could I go to Addie Coles now, please?
Chair, thanks very much, Tom. Thank you very much for for your briefing and it was very interesting to hear you talking about business tourism as a way forward. I think having seen the impact on hospitality and leisure over the pandemic and also looking at the the number of hotels we've got appearing in the city now, that we seem to have that opportunity now to go into a market which perhaps we haven't been able to bid into before. I'm just wondering how you see that developing?
Yeah, I think we've got a fantastic opportunity there. We've got some really great venues in the city and as you say, more and more hotels coming online. I've also been talking to some potential investors recently who they've looked at the Peterborough market and see that even with the opening of the Hilton Hotel, that there's still the need for further hotels in the Peterborough area. Now, that's obviously something that, you know, I'm sure the council will take a view on as well with regards to its planning. But, you know, these are people who, you know, certainly see that there was the commercial return on investment there, particularly around the Conestation Quarter, North Westgate area. So absolutely, with our close links to London, with our really good road network links as well, we're in a fantastic location from a business tourism perspective. And we've got arenas, well, we've got Peterborough Arena, we've got Kingsgate, we've got the hotels, there's all sorts of places. And there's a lot of knock on expenditure as well that comes with those exhibitions and conferences. So not just the hotels that benefit, you know, the retail and the food and beverage industries, you know, they all they all benefit. But also it's a fantastic opportunity to showcase the city as well to the attendees so that we can hopefully then convert some of those into some leisure and tourism visitors in the future as well.
It's really good to hear and it shows a commercial approach that you're taking because unfortunately the grant opportunities are disappearing or have disappeared, particularly as we've heard earlier about skills. But I'm more concerned really, I suppose, about the potential for difficulty economically for the country as a whole as we go through increases in in costs and inflationary pressures and so on. And I just wonder whether as part of your strategic mapping for this particular area in business tourism, you see that there are going to be more challenges perhaps than before this particular period?
Yes, I think it's a little out of the frying pan into the fire, I think, for some businesses, isn't it? You know, we've had a couple of years of challenges through the pandemic and now we're looking at, you know, what's being categorised in the press as as cost of living. But obviously, you know, we're talking really, you know, in a lot of instances, it's going to be about pressures on businesses that we pass on to to consumers. And those pressures on businesses come in the form of increased energy costs, supply chain challenges and and obviously the the current crisis unfolding in in Ukraine is not going to help with that in the slightest. You know, obviously, there are there are bigger, more difficult issues there for those directly involved. But yes, that is going to continue to have an impact on on the economy and on businesses. At the same time, you know, we talk to businesses, they're in a very positive frame of mind at the moment. I think as many businesses as possible want to get back to some sense of normality. And so being able to put on exhibitions and conferences and and get out there and start engaging with their customers and their client bases again is pretty high on the agenda. And even if that doesn't happen right now, we need to be positioning Peterborough as a as a as a location for that, as and when it does happen. So we need to start getting out there now and promoting what we have to offer, which I think is is a fantastic offer.
Thanks. It's great to have such a positive ambassador for the city out there, working in the business community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Cole. I have councillor Resti and councillor Walsh, but in the spirit of ladies first, I'll go to Irene, if I may. I thought I'd get some comments.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yes, well, I agree with our deputy leader that seems to be lots of potential out there and hopefully now we're out of the pandemic, things are going to take off. But looking at my own portfolio, you did mention adult social care and I would be interested to know a little bit more because there is a huge workforce challenge there. So could you just kind of outline what might happen within your organisation?
Yeah, happily. I would have to hold my hands up and say that Opportunity Peterborough would probably not be leading on activity in this area. But it's to flag that some of the work that we've been focusing on with the East Anglia Productivity Forum, which is part of the national work being conducted by the National Productivity Institute in the in the East Anglia area, it's being run by University of Cambridge. One of the key areas we're looking at is the interaction between some of the cutting edge sectors that we have in the area and what we call foundational economy. So those kind of sectors that exist everywhere and a kind of more fundamental health and social care being one of them. Obviously, we've got a fantastic life science biotech offer in the broader East Anglia area. You know, we've got we've got some good activity taking place in Peterborough, but obviously that, you know, primarily focuses on the Cambridge area. And it's how we take some of that learning and, you know, approach to the cutting edge and help the health and social care that we have on the ground, providing services to either access that technology or the approaches to work in order to increase productivity within health and social care. And obviously, when we're talking about productivity within health and social care, what we really want to see is more better outcomes for those people who who are using those services. I know that Cambridge Chambers of Commerce, this is an area that coincidentally, they were starting to look at how do we get to integrate these two sectors better, to achieve better outcomes as well and particularly to address some of the skills issues. So if if we're able to marry up that work with the work that's being done with the Productivity Forum, where there may be some funding to support pilots in this area, then then I think that's a good opportunity. It's a really early stage and and some of it is is very basic, kind of going back to meet the buyer style events where actually we get some of the the social health and social care providers operating in the area, just in a room with some of the people that that have this tech. And if from that, we're hoping to generate opportunities where some of the tech developers might be able to trial some of their new technologies and services with with in partnership with some of the social care partners. It might be short term trials, but hopefully it might start to lead to some longer term relationships, even if it's from a corporate social responsibility perspective. If the businesses in this area who are developing new products and services in this area can work with those who are on the ground providing those services, then then hopefully that that will get some good positive long term outcomes. But the details of it aren't really rounded out yet, but happy to keep you informed.
Yeah, we're really pleased to hear that and yeah, would like to hear more.
And of course, we've got the work that that Peterborough City College Peterborough have been doing as well with the local hospital with regards to their programme to to help support skills development, either those that are already in health and social care to increase their qualification levels or bringing more people from outside in and get those basic qualifications they need as well. So there might be an opportunity there as well to to kind of marry up initiatives.
Thank you councillor Walsh. Thank you, Tom. Councillor Resti?
Thank you, Chair. You've probably heard me say this before, but I think Peterborough is an absolutely fabulous place to live, to work, to play. It's a great place to bring up a family. What we don't have is a destination, you know, a theme park, a water park, something even as lowly as the Viking Centre in York, which is absolutely awful, but attracts thousands of people who pay thirty odd quid for a family. And, you know, it's great for what it for what it offers, but they're not using modern technology, they're, you know, it's, it is what it is. My children love it. I think we could do something far better in Peterborough. Now, have you ever been approached by somebody that would like to do something like that in this in this city? If we could get, if we could get something that would bring people into the city specifically to see some sort of operation, I think it would make a huge difference to the footfall in the city centre, the future of the city. Yeah, I think it's, we're one of those cities that doesn't have any. Have you been approached? Are you thinking about it? Do you think it's a good idea? You know, are we going to do something about it?
I do think it's a good idea. Again, you know, because of our physical location within the country, I think, you know, we should be a prime target location for that sort of thing. We have very recently had an inquiry, it was a national inquiry, well, looking at this, anywhere south of Birmingham, essentially in the country, looking for around one hundred and twenty acres, predominantly woodland, focused on a heritage and historic leisure attraction, large scale. We did have a search around in the local area. Nothing of that scale immediately was available here. And obviously, you know, we'd have to look at the the planning, local plan issues around that as well. But in my discussions with local agents, we did identify a potential opportunity that was just over the Northampton border. Given the scale of the jobs that would be created, we thought we'd put that forward anyway, because we still thought that would have a positive economic impact on on the Peterborough area. But no, absolutely, I agree that that something like that would be fantastic. I think on a different scale possibly, you know, we do have Flagfenn here and I think that there's been some fantastic developments there over the past kind of twelve, eighteen months or so. I think if, you know, we could continue to build that, it is a centre of kind of national and international significance and and could be, you know, if we can promote that and continue to invest in it, that could become, you know, a more major attraction in its own right and tie that into to the Peter Museum and other similar Bronze Age attractions in the area. I think I think that could be a good place to start, but something of the scale that I think you're referring to, I think, would be certainly something that we should be targeting. But it would mean, yeah, going out, I think, with the backing of the local authority and talking to some of the landowners in the area and trying to identify sites of that of that scale as well, that would be attractive to potential investors.
Councillor Resti, follow up?
Thank you, thank you for that. I'm pleased we're firing on all six cylinders on that one. But let me outline what I think. We found these fabulous Bronze Age boats. The area has been identified quite clearly as a Bronze Age civilisation. And I go back to the Viking project. The Viking project in in York, they really hit it on the head because it's underground and it does not take a lot of space. But the queues, you can queue for two hours to get in. Yeah, so if if we thought about something like that with Flagfenn, doesn't necessarily have to be just about the boats, it doesn't necessarily have to be just about Flagfenn. But just think what you could build on that and it wouldn't need anything much bigger than a big shed, never mind hundreds of acres. But with the technologies that we've got today, you could make it really special and you could include, you know, the pyramids and whatever else was going on, you know, in 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 Europe or the world at that time. You can include, you can include sounds, smells now, and you can take people back just because of what's going on around them on a screen. I would urge you to consider trying to find somebody, and I can never remember who, what the company is called, I don't know why, but the people that own the SeaWorld in London and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And they've got stuff all over the place and they're very good at things like that. You know, perhaps a conversation with these kind of people, even if they're not interested, perhaps they might give you an idea.
Yep, yep. Well, I, I'm having difficulty recalling the name at the moment and I do apologise. But the where they, where they found the large Saxon boat down near Ipswich, I know that there was a visit there where the the famous mask comes from. Sutton Hoo, thank you very much councillor. Yes, I know that a visit took place to go and visit Sutton Hoo and see how they'd improved that as an attraction within recent years. And the work they've done down there has been fantastic and, yeah, very much points to to a lot of the the technology in the presentation that you just outlined there, councillor. Yes, I think, you know, we can learn from other attractions that have been very successful in a similar area. But even even as you say, SeaWorld and places like that, whoever, you know, looking a little, you know, thinking a little more naturally as well. Absolutely. Yeah, and we'll, yeah, it would be fantastic to see Flagfenn be invested in in that way.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you councillor Resti. Certainly a subject close to my heart, having that portfolio. And it has to be said that our complete leisure and heritage estate is under review at the moment and we are talking to possible partners and hopefully they will have the gusto and chutzpah to get something like that happening in Peterborough because we have a wonderful asset with those boats and indeed Flagfenn and it needs developing. Councillor Ayers, you have a follow up?
Yes, not necessarily a follow up. I just want to talk about, if I can, something more positive than what I spoke about before because I'm a great supporter of Opportunity Peterborough, as you know, Tom. And and that is largely not because since I became a councillor, but before then, when I used to run a business in Peterborough for many years and really found that the Bondholder Network was excellent to go to. I always went to it and so did quite a few hundred other people every time it was held and it was held in various locations around the city. Kingsgate being one, of course, and Peterborough School being another and various places. And unfortunately, didn't get to your museum one. But can you tell us, I mean, I went to one more recently and there weren't as many people there. Now, that was because that was the first one you'd had since the pandemic took us all away from everything, did it not?
Yes.
How many people did you get at the last one? And you've still got all these, the database of the people that belonged before presumably. And how do you plan to attract them all back and get as enthusiastic as we all used to be before in the businesses in Peterborough?
It's a very good question councillor. It's a very good question, councillor. We had about fifty delegates at the last Bondholder Breakfast. But certainly at its peak, we were, we did have just north of a hundred delegates at each one on a reasonably regular basis. I think, yes, the pandemic has obviously hit that and we were continuing to run them digitally during that period. But I do believe that, you know, whilst people, you know, they do like to come and to hear from the various speakers that we get, you know, we put a very wide range of speakers and provide them with information they can't necessarily get elsewhere. A large part of it is the, the physical networking, and obviously that wasn't something that we were easily able to replicate online. We will be launching a campaign to kind of try and re-engage with some of our former members and get them back, as I say, I think, to enhance that networking element. We're opening it up to the Visit Peterborough and Smart Manufacturing Alliance members as well, you know, so that they, they can come along, we can swell those numbers and that in itself will hopefully make it more attractive. But again, I think it's been a number of years since we've had a review of the Bondholder offer in general, that what businesses want these days aren't necessarily what they wanted five years or so ago. And so we need to take stock of that and talk not just to our members now, but our previous members to find out what would enhance the service and make it more attractive for them.
And can I just say that I too used to thoroughly enjoy the Bondholder dinner, as you know, and hope to enjoy it again in the future. I think that's an excellent idea, if you're going to get back to that, because it used to be November time, or October, November time at the cathedral. Is that, is that what you're planning for this year as well? If you can, of course.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Well, in all honesty, internal conversations, we're looking at that kind of October period. We're also wondering whether we might even be able to do something a bit earlier, in early summer, before the summer break. It would be a big challenge for us internally to organise it within that. It depends on availability at the cathedral as well. But I think, you know, this, we've seen various business awards and that sort of thing take place in the city, but I think something of that scale is really something that businesses would appreciate and look forward to, particularly given the last couple of years that they've had.
Yes, excellent, Tom. And I used to listen to Marco when he used to attend the Bondholder network, and everybody looked forward to that Marco.
It was my idea. So there you go, long enough ago, mind you.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Tom. I think we should never lose sight of the human instinct to mix and interact and get together. The sooner you get the events rolling again, the better it will be for Peterborough and Peterborough businesses. Councillor Reste, follow up?
Yes, Chair, just very, very quickly, it's Merlin Entertainments. They have, I don't know, they have so many different places all around the country, but they're the really big name in that kind of, that kind of entertainment. You know, they did SeaWorld in London and Chessingham Zoo and, you know, Alton Towers. So that's, that's who it may be worth having a conversation with. Might not get anywhere, but it might be worth having a conversation. Dave Anderson has got contact right at the very top of Merlin Entertainments.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for that, councillor. I'll follow up on that and also speak to colleagues, as I say, in planning, see if we can, and within the property community, to see if we can identify a suitable location as well.
Thank you, Tom. I've got several questions, which I saved till the end because I pick it up as we go through other comments, and it's been a very lively debate, so excellent to have you here. I just picked up the fact that you are working with Growth Works. You're not going to be subsumed by Growth Works. You know, Opportunity Peterborough is our arm of promoting our city, and I hate to think your talent is going to be subsumed in an organisation that's perhaps more remote. That's my first question.
That certainly isn't going to be the case, no. I, like you, believe that the city, a city of this scale and with this ambition, needs its own economic development function. Some, some local authorities have that sitting within the local authority itself. Peterborough City Council have taken the opportunity to utilise the urban regeneration company that we were to turn us into an economic development company, and I think that gives us a lot of advantages, allows us to be a fleet of foot and engage with the business community in a way that some other economic development functions in other places aren't. But absolutely, you know, we're here for the long term as we see it. The Growth Works are doing a fantastic job. We're working very closely with them on a number of these areas and on inward investment being one of them. But Peterborough needs its own voice when it's engaging with potential investors. And, you know, at the moment, the Growth Works is looking at a three year contract with a two year extension. It's, it's quite possible that they'll be able to identify further funding to continue that service afterwards. But, you know, Peterborough needs something consistent, and that's what we're here to do, to be here for the long term, promote the interests of Peterborough as a city of 200,000 people and fast growing.
Thank you, Tom. Like councillor Ayers stated, I'm protagonist of Opportunity Peterborough, and that probably hopefully comes out in that last statement I've just made. Now, I'm conscious that you've now taken over the visitor economy element of Peterborough's tourism offer, and you are doing it online. I believe that we need to have a physical presence, and Adrian Chapman is conscious of that, I've had conversations with him, and the leader's conscious of that, and I've asked that we reinstate a visitor desk at least, maybe not a full blown office operation, but a visitor desk, which could be in the reception of the town hall with perhaps support and backup at the central library. I believe that's going forward. Would you be working with them rather than just saying you are doing an online presence and city council has to have a few leaflets at a desk? Can there not be a connection to promote the thing holistically?
I think that would be essential, that we were working holistically. We are already working very closely with Peterborough's tourism manager with regards to the development of the Visit Peterborough work and how we're going about promoting the city. They need to be two sides of the same coin, as it were. We're, we're working as a virtual team at the moment, but we need to be seen by the community as one organisation, one entity, all working under that Visit Peterborough brand, Visit Peterborough, or, you know, some variation of it in the future, if it's felt very strongly that that needs to change. From a name perspective, it needs to be one brand for the city. How, how with that staff behind the scenes, you know, if it's us working very closely with council officers, then so be it. But from externally, it needs to be seamless, you know, it needs to be one offer, talking with one voice and with one brand.
Great. Can I leave it with your good offices then to speak to council officers and make sure that we are joined up and we offer something? As we come out of the pandemic, we throw open the doors of our buildings and welcome visitors to gain information on the city they're visiting.
Absolutely.
Okay, finally, and a big up for you. I'm sure you want to use this opportunity to promote it, that you are getting involved with the bid for the HQ of the Great British Railways. Do you want to speak to colleagues about that?
Yes, I think it's a fantastic opportunity for the city. Obviously, it's a national competition of some importance. I think, obviously, Peterborough has a fantastic rail heritage. We've got some great development opportunities as well in the city at the moment. We've got Station Quarter, we have the rail heritage buildings here, there's obviously potentially some space at the town hall as well, even if that were on an interim basis while there were other commercial buildings built out. And we will be, you know, working with as many stakeholders as possible to get the strongest possible bid we can to secure that headquarters for the city. I expect it to be tough competition. There'll be a lot of other cities with, you know, a lot of other offers and strong rail, equally strong rail heritage going for this. But it's absolutely something that is right for Peterborough to throw its hat in the ring for and go after as strongly as possible. We've, we've reached out to, as I say, a lot of stakeholders, so Railworld, Neen Valley Railway, Peck, the council itself. There are many elements of this where we are not the experts, and so it's really got to be the city coming together. We're very happy to lead on it, to coordinate it, to write it. But for example, there's a strong emphasis on the levelling up agenda, what the city is doing at the moment on levelling up, what its strategy is going forward. So any, anyone who would be able to contribute to that element of it, we'd be very grateful to hear from them. Likewise, rail heritage is something that they're very keen on hearing about. So organisations, as I say, NVR, we were already in contact with, but any experts in the rail heritage of the city, again, very keen to hear from. It's got to be a city effort, and should we make it through to the shortlist, then they will be looking to run a vote in the city to garner local community support for such a venture. So again, the more organisations we have promoting this, as something very positive for the city, the better. But I know that the leader of the council, local members of parliament have also already come out very strongly in favour of this. So it's already getting good profile, and we will certainly put our best foot forward for the city.
Thank you, Tom. I feel your enthusiasm and we share your enthusiasm and we push that even forward. So let's make it happen, cabinet members, councillors and city council. Thank you very much for a comprehensive report and thank you for answering lots of questions. Quite an interesting debate there, I thought. So we have the shareholder cabinet committee note the achievements and impact of Opportunity Peterborough with regard to support for the local economy and jobs creation, as well as plans for the financial year 2223. Are we all on board with that, agreed? Thank you, Tom. Thanks for coming to see us.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillors.
Next item is number five on the agenda, Meacham Homes Annual Review. We have the officer Michael Kelleher attending and I believe Claire Higgins and Gary Brier Teams, is that correct?
Correct. Morning, councillor.
Okay, Michael, yours?
Thank you, Chair. So yes, my report is going to be brief and hopefully supported by Claire and Gary if there are any technical questions, particularly around delivery. So Meacham Homes has maintained a steady programme of activity throughout the last 12 months. That's despite the problems that we've had with lockdown and other COVID restrictions. They now have three fully completed schemes that are providing 94 affordable homes for rent at Bellevue, Midland Road and Crowland Road, and they continue to perform satisfactorily from a management perspective. There are two schemes in the pipeline, anticipated to deliver between 160 and 180 additional units, which will hopefully be delivered in phases starting next financial year 2223, with completion during the following year. And these will deliver a mix of social and shared ownership properties. So these schemes are at Breton Court and 723 London Road. At Breton Court, enabling works have now been complete. The council has entered into a sublease with Meacham to the management of the five commercial units in the building, and that gives Meacham direct control of these units in advance of any negotiations with decanting and surrendering of leases, et cetera. The initial scheme proposed was to deliver 120 units across three blocks. Following feedback from the local planning authority, the scheme has been amended and it is now looking to deliver around 85 new build one and two bedroom flats. In addition, there will be 500 square metres of retail commercial space at ground level and around about 110 car parking spaces. In relation to London Road scheme, heads of terms have been agreed with the council and a conditional contract is close to being signed. The exact timing of this is currently uncertain, as it is dependent on the council's work to resolve third party legal issues with regards to the adoption of a joining highway. I think it's fair to say that the early part of any joint venture is really around proving proof of concept, and I think it's also fair to say that Meacham has successfully done that, with 94 units delivered to date and a pipeline of schemes for future development. The council is currently reviewing its housing service and also its companies alongside SIPFA. The council is also looking to develop a new housing strategy over the coming 12 months. So now is an appropriate moment for us to reflect on where both Cross Keys Homes and the council want Meacham to go. And that is my report.
Thank you, Gary. Sorry, Michael, do I have any further input from Gary or Claire at this stage, or shall I go to questions?
I'd like to input if possible, please, Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Claire. Plause yours.
Thank you. I think for me, I'd like to draw committee's attention to those points of 47, 48, 49 and 410, where Michael has suggested that the review does encompass the work of Meacham Homes. But I think from our point of view, I think it would, it would be remiss of me not to say, I think there's an opportunity being missed here. There is some frustration that we can do a lot more, and it's not just about building houses, it's about really extending the work, the partnership, and providing lots of solutions to the challenges that the city is facing as a whole around housing. And I think there is some frustration, certainly from Cross Keys' perspective, that the progress of the work of the joint venture hasn't been as rapid as we would have liked, and much looking forward to the review that's underway of housing services so that we can really make some traction and deliver lots more accommodation of a variety of tenures for the city. That's what I'd like to say. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Claire. That was a good input, which I think will help stimulate questions from members. And councillor Ayers?
Yes, yes, I thought that was a very good input from Claire as well. Can I, because I had made a note against paragraph 4 dot four and 4 dot five, because in both of them, it seems that where these works are concerned with Meacham Homes, the word was used of the progress of the design is subject to further planning input, which is awaited. Is it still awaited? And if so, how long have they been waiting? And also on 45, we're waiting for legal issues to be resolved. I accept that's with third parties and they can be, that can be difficult. But I'd like some explanation of that, if we can have, please.
Good question. Thank you, councillor Ayers. I think we do feel that there are, there is a bit of a logjam that needs to be cleared in both instances. Thank you.
Gary's much closer to this than me, but I think we are talking years rather than months here.
Yeah, just to clarify, thank you, Chair, thank you for the question. If I do with 44, the question on Breton Court, we submitted a scheme which we felt was appropriate for the area and did have the support of the planning team to develop a region of 100 plus units. However, due to some resource issues, et cetera, we had difficulties getting any meaningful dialogue with colleagues in the highways team for periods of months and months. And I think, I think it did go on for about six months in the end. We raised this at a number of places. Eventually, they did interact with part of our pre-app process, and we have done more work on surveys, et cetera. And we think in January, we have come to a conclusion where we have a car parking ratio and a site density which would now be supported through the planning process by colleagues and the highways team. There was no point submitting planning while they were objecting to what we were doing. What they were asking for, we felt was an unreasonable level of parking provision in an urban subcentre of Peterborough.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Gary. Any input from Michael or Claire on that? No? Okay. Further question, do you want, sorry, Michael? No, okay. Further questions, councillor Reste and then councillor Coles?
Thank you. I'm really sorry that I didn't get a chance to go and see 723 London Road. Can you tell me which side of London Road that is? Is that the posh side of London Road or is that the other side?
The 723 London Road side, I think is colloquially called the gravel car park.
The what?
It's the-
Oh, the gravel car park, yeah.
Yeah, it's the football ground. It's behind the Vista Building on the corner. The problem there, which is the third party issue, is when Maurice Holmes built out that Vista Development and the housing behind, even though they built it in circa 2012, the road was never adopted, not through any fault of the council, but the way Maurice Holmes did their section 38 works. In the last couple of years, when they tried to do the section 38 and ask the council to adopt it, it appears that Maurice Holmes made an error when they sold some of the individual plots to residents in the area. So the streetlights, I believe, are substantially sat in people's gardens rather than in the pavements. So the council are quite right, they said, how can they adopt those and take them? So apparently Maurice Holmes have been working behind the scenes to try and get back the bits of land where the streetlights are, but that has held up the adoption. So everything from the traffic- So everything from the traffic lights down, from the Vista Building, whilst built to adoptable standard, has not been adopted. And unfortunately for us, the gravel car park site can only be serviced off that access road. Planners will not allow access off the main London Road for obvious reasons. So it's the gravel car park site we're talking about.
Thank you, Gotte. Councillor Coles.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much for the presentation. I'm particularly interested in the Breton Court work. And I suppose one has to look at what you're trying to achieve there, which is to provide sufficient affordable housing. But also it says some retail units as well, which I'm assuming are going to be providing income that can support further developments. But I'm just wondering about, you know, the way that the pandemic has impacted very much on the retail sector, whether you see that that's still as viable as it was pre that time and whether you're satisfied that that's going to work for you.
The retail element was driven actually by PCC. So when we acquired the Breton Court office block above the five existing shops, the five shops remained on a long-term, one, two, five-year lease with Peterborough City Council. And Peterborough City Council take the income from those shop units, not Meacham Homes. So they are all currently let. One of the units was a former police station, so it's a pseudo-office, which I believe the tenant does want to come out of. The other four or five units all have leases which run between two and five years. So part of our commitment and agreement that we'd obtained from the council was that if we chose to come up with a solution where we knock the building down, that the council would like that similar level of retail to be offered as part of the new build solution. Now, you're absolutely right that those sorts of decisions and conversations took place a couple of years ago. And perhaps it is inevitable that a review would have to take place as whether the existing tenants would relocate into new shops or whether they would choose to leave the area. At the moment, certainly three of the tenants are keen to remain in the area, which is the subway, the bank, which is Loys Bank, and Corp Funeral Care. So it could well be that perhaps the 500-ish square metres perhaps comes down a little bit inside. But the circa 500 was to replace the existing provision, which is currently council-driven income.
Thanks very much. That's very clear. Thank you.
Any other questions? So can I just get an understanding? Are you now fairly confident that these two schemes which are held up are on the way to resolution? If you could answer that, then I'll come back with an additional question.
Breton Court, certainly. We've managed to engage with the highways team. The highways team have now come up with something which we think would allow us to build a meaningful amount of residential units on the site and not just a very, very large car park. And so we're confident that we should be able to put that planning application in formally within the next couple of months. And more importantly, have a planning application that is supported by council colleagues, council officers. There's no point putting a scheme and it's going to be rejected. So I'm sure we're over the, over the peak problems now at Breton Court. London Road, I'd like to say yes, but the last update we'd had was that the legal issues were going to be resolved with Maurice Holmes sometime back in September, October. Unfortunately, we've not had an update from council officers on that. So I'm hoping that is the case because that's certainly the only thing that's stopping the sale going ahead and therefore the planning application going ahead. But I'm hesitant, councillor Allen, to say London Road is resolved because it is in the hands of Maurice Holmes. And I've been hearing that message for 12 months, unfortunately, that it's nearly resolved.
Thank you, Gary. Very frustrating for you, very frustrating for us as a council and very frustrating for our partners with Cross Keys. We want to develop housing, affordable housing for residents of our city. And so it's very frustrating. I don't know how we get out of this impasse. But I do hope that planning colleagues and the owners of Maurice Holmes are listening to this debate today. Now, on the back of that answer and that debate, the debate we've just had regarding those schemes that are held up, what's the strategy going forward? Because with the absence of a council housing resume new account, we perhaps have a bit of a sort of stymie with regard to how we drive forward our affordable home projects in Peterborough. Do we have something that we can take forward with Meacham Homes that will be meaningful and provide some houses?
Shall I answer that?
Please, Claire.
I mean, I would like to say, yes, we do. But I think we do need to reflect on the difficulties that we've had with the developments that we've got currently underway. So if you were looking to invest in the city with the progress and then time that schemes take to get through, it's not the most attractive of propositions, being completely honest. Cross Keys is very committed to Peterborough. Our heart and head is in Peterborough. We have got investment funds available and we are very keen to do more work through Meacham Homes. But we can't allow things to take as long as they take. And I know that's a frustration for everybody, but we've really got to have some guarantees that we will be able to get schemes moving through, that we won't be working in competition with alternative provision that the city might be supporting and that we can actually have a clear pathway to increased investment for the city that we all know we so desperately need. So the answer is yes, but with caveats, I would suggest.
Thank you, Claire. I think we perhaps leave this meeting somewhat frustrated, all of us. I appreciate your input, your honesty, and I think officers need to be aware. And we all need to try and get out of where we are and make sure that Meacham works for our city. Adrian Chapman.
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to thank Claire and Gary for their honesty. And to say, and it won't be a surprise to either of you and to members, that this is the same feedback that I've picked up from many places, a number of developers and other investors, saying that it's quite challenging to work with this council on developments right now. I'm about three weeks or so into the new role and I can assure you that right at the top of my list of things to do is to address that problem. We need to be a council that's enabling development, that is easy to work with, that is applying common sense principles. And it feels at the moment that we're not quite there. So I just wanted to acknowledge that loud and clear and I appreciate the honesty. But I am definitely making it a huge priority to fix.
Thank you, Adrian. That's noted. And yeah, I know you and I have worked on this for some number of years now, going back to some of the early adult social care schemes there. I appreciate you, you know, your support on this matter. But yes, you've literally just picked this up. But yeah, I think there's been a combination of mixed messages, as Claire said. The pursuit of the HRA and that the previous finance director was looking to make investments in that direction and not necessarily Meacham. So Meacham is coming to the end of its grant funding. So some certainty on whether PCC wishes to continue to invest in the partnership would be a helpful dialogue, Adrian. And with councillor Allen wearing his housing portfolio hat, and that's perhaps something that members can discuss offline in the near future.
Thanks, Adrian. Much appreciated. I echo what Gary says. But also I think that, you know, if you can't make it work with us and Meacham, you're probably going to struggle to make it work with many people because we're a very willing and patient partner.
I absolutely agree. Thank you.
Thank you for that intervention, Adrian, and thank you for your comments, Gary and Claire. Michael, do you have any further inputs before I? No? Okay. Well, I think we've, again, this has been very helpful. And I think that it's perhaps thrown back the curtains on something which we now need to move forward. So thank you very much. Recommendation on pay 15. It's recommended that shareholder cabinet committee note the contents of this report. Specifically note the review of companies that the council is involved with as part of the overall financial sustainability programme. Sorry, councillor Walsh.
Would it be possible to just put in a few words about a kind of renewed vigour behind unblocking the developments that we were talking about and strengthening our relationship with the existing partnership?
That's a good intervention. Do you want to form some words, Pippa? Do you want to take a note of the suggestion of councillor Walsh? Renewed vigour, I heard. That's an important one. Okay, you're happy with that? Do you want to read back what we're now going to have as a recommendation?
So I can have something along the lines of, and the committee notes the renewed vigour in which we wish to work with engaging developers.
Somewhere it needs to say, we are working with renewed vigour to overall, I don't know, but where are we? Where do we put that in? Irene has helped me out with this. We specifically note the review of the companies that the council is involved with as part of the overall financial sustainability programme and reinforce our commitment to Meacham and work with renewed vigour to provide outcomes. Yeah? Okay. Thank you, Irene. Appreciate that. Sorry, councillor Walsh. And thank you all for attendance today. And I think we now move on to the work programme.
Thank you.
Item six. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Chair, if I may, item six, there's a number of names that need to be changed, but apart from that, I'm not sure whether we...
Sorry, let me turn this off. I'll hear you.
Item six, there's a number of names that need to be changed just to update the officers that are leading on those particular areas. But otherwise, I think we can accept it.
So there's some changes on there. Do you say councillor Coles, but otherwise taken as read?
I think so. It's just in terms of lead officers because we have had some starting changes in the meantime.
Okay, we're happy with that? Sorry, Pippa.
Yep. Sorry, just to note that obviously we've come to the end of the year for the work programme. So this is a template for what we can take forward to next year. But obviously I'll be liaising with officers and members about what to put directly on the plan next year. But this is the baseline.
Okay, fine. Happy with that, councillor Coles? Okay, so we note the work programme. I think that's how we conclude. And that brings us to the end of the meeting. Thanks for your attendance today. A very worthwhile meeting, I think. Thank you.